I got in some today on punishment. And it was kicking at that tree down.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we thank you for the day. Thank you for every opportunity you give us in serving you. Thank you for those on the council and the alderman, the mayor, and all of the ones that serve in this community to make it a better place to live and serve. We ask you to bless this meeting tonight and make good things come from it. In Christ's name, amen.
The United States of America and through the republic which stands one nation under God in a vision with liberty and justice for all.
Now roll call please.
Mayor. Gina, uh, I'm sorry, Ginger Stewart.
Here.
Wendell Walker.
Here.
Stephen Holt. Stan Moran.
Here.
Sean Simpson.
Here.
Wendell Moore. Raymond Hatton. Jim Ed Ransom.
Here.
Shane Hamilton.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Sure one had a chance to read over, read over previous month's meeting, September ninth. Make a motion accept. Motion Jim Ed to accept the meeting, man.
Second.
Second by Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion two. Uh, no public comment. Long County Library. Now the, uh, Long Police Department Chief Keith Graham.
Good evening everybody.
Evening.
Uh, first part of it is our monthly report. Last month, we did two hundred and thirty-two reports for calls for service. We had ten misdemeanor, new misdemeanor arrests and ten, nine felony arrests. We doubled our numbers from last month. So our officers are getting out there and being a lot more productive. Making arrests and writing more citation and taking more reports for everything. Any questions on the monthly report? And then the second part of my stuff is to have an approval for us to go and purchase the Kansas City Highway Patrol one of the vehicles like we did a few months ago. We are running into a situation right now where we're having vehicles go down left and right. Currently have three vehicles short. We've got two in the shop, one's in Heaver Springs getting looked at to be fixed. The other one's sitting at a shop in Cabot right now. Looking at having the front end replaced for the third time and the vehicle's been wrecked twice so far. That vehicle has a hundred and twenty-seven thousand miles on it. When we run into vehicle police cars that are having a hundred thousand miles or more, we'll be starting dealing with a lot of work that's. Lifters going bad. We had one vehicle a couple of months ago that the lifters went bad and we spent three thousand dollars to get that one fixed. If one of them goes bad with the motor, you're looking thirty-five hundred dollars to eight thousand dollars plus for a new motor. Same thing with the transmission. One of the cars that's in, looking, being looked at for the front end, transmission's starting to slip in it, so. We're gonna look, end up having to spend seven thousand dollars to get a new transmission put into it. We need to have a vehicle that's reliable and that the officers can feel safe and doing their job and then citizens know that they called your time when they call for service. We did have one break down at the stop lot at Center Street a couple of weekends ago. Basically, uh, back end of the motor where the radiator, where the thermostat and everything goes into just shattered. So they were sitting there like, luckily, we didn't have a call going on at that time, so it wasn't a big deal. Got off the roadway and now it's in for service. We have three vehicles that are, two vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles right now and two of them that are at, right at a hundred thousand, just a little bit low. So I'm asking for approval to get this, uh, vehicle from Kansas. The Kansas car's coming with a hundred thousand mile powertrain warranties, just like mine. We have two, three other chargers right now that are under a powertrain warranty. That's helping us out with the one at Heaver Springs right now getting fixed, cause oil pan gasket went out there. And they're fixing that for no charge under warranty. So instead of dumping the money into the older cars, we can end up selling them and looking at kind of just some estimates on it. We can auction the two cars we have right now off and make anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars off those two vehicles. So that'll help offset the price of this vehicle a little bit, once we get those auctioned. So I'm asking for approval in purchasing this vehicle.
Let me, uh, why are we having all day trouble? We're not being keeping them up or what?
They're keeping them up as best they can, but when the police cars are, they're ran hard and they're stopped, they're started, and then they're running somewhere else and they're idling. It takes wear and tear on the vehicle. So when you go from zero to get into a call at sixty, seventy miles an hour in a very quick time, that's multiple times. They're gonna wear out. All, all the vehicles do. And when you start at that hundred thousand mile, that's when you start seeing the engines go out. Lifters go out, transmissions go out, the rear ends, the front ends. Everybody drives these roads in the city. You see how the potholes are everywhere. They tear the front ends out. And right now, you're paying for a front end to be replaced, you're looking at about two thousand dollars.
So the car that's wrecked, that's been, that was wrecked and we had the front end put underneath it three times.
Yes.
So when we looked at the second time, why didn't we go back to where it was fixed originally and have them look at it again because of them fixing it? Us having to replace a front end because when it was wrecked and it keeps wearing out a front end, then that goes back to the body shop that fixed it. We got a problem in alignment of frame, unibody, or whatever.
And a lot of, there's not a lot of documentation on how the vehicles have been maintained. Since I came over here in June and now that we've hired in Tori, we have created a system that documents everything that's being done to the vehicles. And we can give you a cost estimate, how much we're spending on that vehicle in its life cycle.
Well, I mean, we drive vehicles that's got three hundred and fifty thousand miles on them and we drive two hundred and fifty, three hundred miles a day, so. We bought a car at the beginning of the year and we took the other money and put into maintenance to keep that cars up that we have. The only way I can see move, that I feel like moving forward is to sell that gray truck that we have to one of our departments in town that need a truck, that are looking for, that is looking for a truck, and then take that money and put toward another vehicle. I'm not, I'm not for buying another police car because that's how we planned at the beginning of the year. Is to use that extra money with the car to put into maintenance. We've got to take care of our cars better than what we're taking care of them. If we have to have, put them in a program, we have to take care. We can't buy a new car every time when it gets a hundred thousand miles on it.
And typically, we, we don't. It look, looking at our statistics, most of the time, the car's gonna last four to five to seven years, somewhere in that range. And the vehicles we're purchasing, the one we purchased, the Durango, it's got fifty thousand miles. That will have a service life of another four to five years. So we'll get our money out of that. These here, they're being over a hundred. I don't think anybody wants to wait if somebody's having a medical emergency or a, somebody's breaking into their house.
Do we have a maintenance program for these vehicles?
We do now. We do have ours now. We're utilizing the county, which is saving us money. Instead of us paying seventy something dollars for oil changes, we're now taking it to the county for forty. So we're saving about thirty dollars. We're using them for changing tires. Instead of a hundred and fifty-five dollars to mount and balance four tires, we're not having to pay that. We're using the county to mount and balance the tires.
Yeah, but they're not, when they change the tires and stuff like that, they're not looking at the front end. If you take it to have tires put on, most of those people look at the front end and check all the.
Some of them do.
So it's getting by somewhere, you know? And like I said, when we bought the one you, you're driving, we talked about, you said right here that that truck was, was no good for a place to park.
Right. And I have no issue selling the grand truck. I think that's.
If we could sell it, if we could sell that truck for fair market value somewhere, then I, I'd be willing to, you know, I mean.
The only problem that is you have to get on a waiting list. If you want a brand new police vehicle, there's only four vehicles out there in the state Arkansas that's under bids. You have an F-150, a Durango, a Tahoe, which is sixty thousand dollars, or the Explorer. You're gonna wait anywhere from six months to seven months right now for a vehicle. Plus, you're an outfit. For a brand new vehicle, no matter what model, you're gonna pay about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in upfitting, putting lights, cages, and everything in it. So now you take a forty thousand dollar vehicle and you're gonna miss six months.
Well, I mean, and, and I get that. I mean, but, I mean, that's not how we planned the year to, to, to do this, um.
I mean, if they need a vehicle, they need vehicle, but we need to keep them up too.
Oh, yeah. And that's why we are keeping up with them. But we need the cars.
I got a miles report done daily.
No, no, I mean, you have your gas, when you, we, we transitioned to the new gas cards, we can keep up with mileage and stuff. A lot, it's a lot better. So, I mean, they're, it's hard for the, for us in law enforcement to be able to like say, okay, we're gonna only drive a hundred and fifty miles.
No, I ain't, I'm not worried about that. But if you, if you do a mileage check, in the mornings, if you check ten-eight and you report your mileage, then when you check ten-seven, you report your mileage, that'll give you the total miles for that day. And then over a period of a month, you can add that up. Every, if, every week, if you do that, it'll give you how many miles on that car for oil change, instead of just, oh, I think it needs oil change. Let's, let's, let's meet in the PM group where we do that.
We have that in place and buyer estimates are around fifteen to twenty thousand miles a year is what we're typically driving. That's why I said, you know, service life, four to five years on these vehicles. So once we buy a couple more, replace the ones that have the high mileage, we're not gonna have to go and buying multiple cars a year, or even brand cars.
So do we not know what it's gonna take to fix the car at Heaver Springs?
The one in Heaver Springs will be covered under warranty. It's got sixty-six thousand miles on that one, so that one's gonna be covered, so that'll get back on duty. But we're still down two other vehicles and with us having a higher, we're having a higher.
The one with the front end problem, where is it at right now?
That one's at Arnold Auto Service in Cabot currently.
Okay, well, let's take it to the dealership so we can find out what's wrong with it. Cause I, these, I just think that's the best thing to do. Because nothing against these guys that are, that are independent dealers, but let's get it under a certified mechanic and let's get some certifications on it and then go from there.
Okay. They do all the police work, police vehicle work for local.
That's what I suggest, but I mean, we'll do whatever the council wants to do.
Do we have the money to buy the vehicle he talking about? I mean, we, we, we took it. We had two. We said we're gonna take, buy one and take the other thirty for maintenance back first year.
Yeah.
You know? Like I say, I, I'm, I'm okay with buying one, but we, we need to get rid of, if we're not gonna, I mean, if we're not gonna use that truck as a vehicle, then we need to get rid of it. You know, I mean.
We need to get rid of it. I used time out putting it at the school and getting rid of the two cars.
And then you're gonna be, you're gonna, would you get that, you're still gonna be behind, I'll be here.
You'll be behind one, but next year, maybe we can buy another used one or something. But that's, that's whatever y'all wanna do.
I mean, if, if we need it, we need it. But I, I, you know, like I say, we, you know, we need to start taking a little better care of what we got, you know?
These are, they all are, they're being now checked every single month on their vehicles by.
We just got, you know, GPS trackers on all of them now, you know? You can see how they're drove, you know, everything. I have a question, chief.
Yes, sir.
When an officer comes in in the morning and he goes out, does he check it all on his vehicle?
They're supposed to. By policy, they're supposed to.
But are they?
I think some of them are. Some of the ones that are not.
Cause that's their equipment.
They are being dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
What you gonna do with the vehicle that SRO, Officer School, Resource Office, where you putting that vehicle?
Where it would be great to have that cut, come to the road and have those two, the Durango and the one from the school on the streets for patrol.
And put the truck over at the school?
Put the truck on it and stripe it up, do everything, cause it's gonna be a SRO vehicle. We're getting a, uh, should have a cage donated for the truck. So that will allow the SRO to transport somebody if he has to. It'll be marked as a police vehicle. He's not driving it. He doesn't drive it. They've had, the one that's in the school right now, it's got four thousand miles on it and they've had it for a while now. So it'll get more use out on the street.
There's money available.
There is money available to buy.
What, uh, how much we have in maintenance? Do we have, you looked on it?
I did not look at the maintenance.
Yeah.
But they do, they have lots of money in the criminal justice fund. Just where we're transferring the money for, to begin with.
Yeah. I'd say, I, I, I don't want you to beat out a vehicle, but, you know, and I just, I just want us to take better care of what we got, you know?
And they are being held accountable.
Yeah.
If they, we have a, a counseling and they're not maintaining the vehicle, and then it progressively goes up from counseling to reprimand and to suspension if they're not keeping up their stuff.
I'll make a motion to buy the vehicle.
Do what now?
So I'll make a motion to buy the vehicle.
Stephen made a motion to purchase a vehicle for, what is that?
Thirty-five one seventy-five.
Thirty-five one seventy-five.
Thirty-five one seventy-five. I got a motion.
I'll go, I'll second it. Yes, I'll.
Seconded by Wendell.
What says motion to put ordinance number eight nineteen to purchase that vehicle on the floor?
Yeah. Seconded by Wendell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance number eight nineteen, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of a used police vehicle for the Lonoc Police Department, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas both Lonoc City ordinance number eight oh six and Arkansas Code Annotated fourteen dash, fourteen dash fifty-eight dash three oh three require competitive bidding for the purchase of supplies, apparatus, equipment, materials, and services, the cost of which is in excess of thirty-five thousand. And whereas the city has an immediate need for an additional vehicle for the Lonoc Police Department to enable its performance services to the citizens of Lonoc. And whereas the city has located a suitable vehicle through the Kansas Highway Patrol, which will not be available elsewhere. And whereas the City Council for the City of Lonoc has determined that an emergency exists and that placing the matter for bid, if necessary, would unduly delay and not result in true competitive bidding, since the vehicles are not available through another supplier. And whereas the city has further determined that competitive bidding, if necessary, is not presently feasible or practical and could unnecessarily harm the city's functional capability to perform its stated goals of providing police protection to its citizens. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lonoc, Arkansas, one, that it is not feasible or practical to require competitive bidding by the city as required by law for this limited purpose. Two, that the requirement of competitive bidding for the purchase of a used twenty-twenty-two Dodge Durango Pursuit AWD is hereby waived and the city is authorized to expend funds for the purchase of the police vehicle in the sum of thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-five and zero one hundred dollars, thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to be paid to Kansas Highway Patrol Car Fund as stated in, on the attached exhibit. Three, that the procurement of this vehicle is necessary to provide the city's functional capabilities for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. An emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full fo, force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Send a motion to accept first reading.
I'll make a motion.
Motion Stephen, accept first reading.
Thank you.
Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Give me it. Now, motion to put second, third reading, suspend the rule.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Stephen to suspend the rule, second, third reading. Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance eight nineteen, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of a used police vehicle for the Lonoc Police Department, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Motion set.
I'll make.
Motion Stephen to accept second, third reading.
Second.
Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, and all against?
Aye.
Motion two. Emergency. Motion from Sean to, uh, adopt emergency, I'm sorry. Second.
I second.
Second by Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And motion to adopt. Motion to adopt by Sean. Second by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I can prove myself. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Mosquito Director Evan Jacobs.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, first off, we finally got done with the buildings. You can see up there on monitor, here's pictures of completed project. As for everything else we got going on right now, soccer and, uh, volleyball and pool swing, we'll be wrapping that up here at the end of the month. Mosquitoes, it's finally getting cold, they're getting a little better. Here, and we'll be wrapping that up towards the end of month, and the, eh, end of the month as well. We need to. Okay, that's what, uh, for now, that's all I've got for you guys. Any questions for me?
On the playground equipment really looks good.
Thank you, thank you.
I know the kids like it.
Oh, yeah, they absolutely love it. They're so happy to know where, they know exactly where their kids are going when they can't find them.
Right. Anybody got any question? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, Community Center Director Mike Brown.
Good evening.
Evening, Mike.
For the month of September, man, we're getting a little closer. We're only thirty, was it thirty-six away? So, uh, hopefully, by December, we'll, we'll be at, we'll be at a thousand. Uh, you, you see my numbers, uh, we're still planning catch up from the two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, two hundred plus that we've, uh, spent at first of the year, so, uh, if everything goes well and, uh, hopefully, we can be out of the red in the year to date and be close to even, uh, uh, a little more. Uh, you see our balance, we've got a pretty hefty balance still. Uh, events, uh, Baptist Health will, uh, be at the center on the thirtieth, uh, with health checks, cholesterol checks, and flu shots. Uh, a member of the month is Megan Kelly Brew. Uh, we're continuing, uh, basketball signups and mammograms. We have a mammal van coming, I think, in early December. And, uh, one thing that I'm doing is planning for, which is hard to believe, it's budget time again, so planning for budget, uh, for next year and no action items.
Okay, any questions, anybody? All right, thank you very much. Uh, Fire Department Chief Justin Wittenberg.
Good evening. I believe the first thing you got your package, this will just broke out what we did last month. If you look at that, bottom, we had fifty-three calls. The next sheet will pretty much say the same thing. Uh, twenty-nine of them were EMS calls, twenty-four fire related calls. We received automatic aid once. We had four overlapping calls, uh, total of eighteen minutes and twenty-five seconds on scene. Any questions?
Anybody? Yep, that's nice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Public Works, uh, Director Robert Sullivan.
Last month, we have new, one new water tap. We fixed five service line leaks. And we had one main break, somebody ran over, on a solar farm, somebody ran over our two inch blow off. And we got that all fixed up.
Is there any? I know we're supposed to start the fixing a bit out of the sewer over off of, well, from east of Harrison all the way to Hicks. All that'll be done. We're just waiting on, should start any time, so I think we've got everything turned in. Is there, and we're still waiting on the water line on eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Waiting on the owner. Waiting on the owners, I mean, we've been ready for months, so, is there anything else? That I can think of, any questions, anybody? Thank you, Rob, thanks, thank you, sir. I know, James, you got anything you need to? Cause he's been kinda, hasn't cared for water department, I mean, the street department and leaf and limb and all kinds of stuff, but.
Over on that, we've been doing a lot of ditch cleaning out over on that side. It's actually starting, we're starting to go through there a lot better than when it has been. We are still working on drainage everywhere in town, so.
A lot of those pipes have disintegrated and caved in.
Yeah.
We dug a lot, they've done a, they've a job in several places, and done one on, one on Washington and one on Lincoln today, right?
And, uh, yeah, also come.
And they started paving today. At three hundred thousand dollars of free paving, they started their own cotton lanes done, the cul-de-sacs and everything. And they still gotta do, over in front of Jim's down on, uh, East Front.
Yeah.
Down there by the school, and dismuc, and I can't remember where all there is going, but thank goodness, I've, I've been, I've been waiting for months for that to start, but.
And we did that deal on patch job over on Eagle Drive, uh, there was water standing in the road, they couldn't get over to the other side.
We did get that patched and water's running, like it's supposed to. It's, uh, but, we're just doing, and we're fixing to start the ditch over off Brown Street around those woods. You know, we were gonna re, just dig that ditch, that existing ditch out, there's so many trees, and I don't wanna take a lot of the trees out of there. And Mr. Kettler gave us permission to come on the outside and go all the way around with a brand-new ditch. So, that'll be a lot better. And, uh, trying to think, is there any other?
No, nothing else right this month.
Then we still gotta jump in here.
Off Academy?
Yeah, we're gonna drop that pipe on Academy, that big one.
Oh, yeah.
Down by your place, and take that corner off where that water will get on out of there. That'll be a lot better, but. Can you think of anything else, is there? Anything in streets or drainage y'all need to?
I talked to James about one over here on Fourth, in that, uh, Fourth and Debbie.
Yeah.
We, he go, go look at it.
Okay. All right, anything else? Thank you, sir. Okay, old business, uh, solar array, everybody had a chance to. Any questions on their solar array, anybody?
Like the peak season done left us.
Uh-huh.
Don't like the peak season has done left.
Well, and it's funny how close, it's just a few hundred dollar difference from last year.
Yeah.
So it's exactly.
This past September, we had, you know, we had some rain, and we had some clouds covering those two, but I guess that's what affects it. Cause I went back and looked at this year versus last year, and that's what it had to have been.
New business, uh, condemnation of property on four fourteen Eagle Street. That's that one we brought up last month, it's, it burnt. Is anyone able to talk to the owner of it, of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of us, didn't you talk to her?
I spoke with her, just about getting her yard cleaned up, and that escalated, huh? Yeah.
I understand.
Do you know where she lives, cause?
Right now?
We, we have a good idea.
I don't, I don't, I don't know where she lives, I don't know where she lives.
Yeah, we hadn't had any luck getting in touch with her.
We don't even know what her intentions are, or what she's gonna do.
Well.
Nope, sound like.
I have a feeling she's not gonna do much more than she's already done.
Yes, it's been there for.
Right, it's a year.
Over a year ago.
I mean.
So, I mean, can I make a motion to just, let's go ahead and continue?
Go ahead with it?
Yeah.
I got a motion, Stan, to go ahead with a condemnation on four fourteen Eagle.
Second.
Seconded by Jim Ed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.
Just a comment on this one title-wise, it looks like after it burned, uh, the mortgage was paid off in twenty twenty-three, so probably that was insurance proceeds that paid that off.
Right.
Um, which means there may not be a whole lot of money from an insurer or whatever pays on it. Maybe something that we just try to have to recover through sale of the property eventually through a foreclosure. Um, anyway, so. Or ta- or lien on taxes too, obviously, hopefully that'll be even better.
All right, now back to the one on the line. One twenty East Fifth Street, which we talked about months ago. I'll make a motion to move forward with this property. Uh, it's.
I second.
Motion Jim Ed to go forward with the property on one twenty East Fifth. By Jim Ed, seconded by Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care. And there's one more.
While we're pulling that one up, the Lambis property in one twenty East Fifth Street has a twenty-five thousand dollar mortgage on it from two thousand sixteen and a default judgment for about fifty-eight hundred from twenty twenty. Um, it was certified to the state for taxes in twenty twenty-one, but then redeemed in twenty twenty-four, so you've at least got somebody willing to redeem it for taxes, but it's still got those other liens that would be prior to us if we had to foreclose. However, if we can be, um, listing them on the tax rolls as something to be paid, then maybe we could get paid back for that on that one. So, it's a little more complicated than the other one, but we're wanting to clean it up. You know, I have much choice other than.
So, we can put a lien on the property on its taxes, is that what, is that what you're telling us?
Uh-huh, the cleanup costs can be assessed as a lien on the, um, like, just like taxes, so when they come to pay taxes eventually, maybe on it, when they come to pay taxes, then, then they'd have to pay our lien in addition to their taxes in order to pay it in full. Um, or we could go through a traditional foreclosure on it, which would be quicker than waiting three more years for it to get certified to the state for taxes.
I say move forward with the foreclosure.
Well, my problem with that is, I don't know that the value of the property exceeds the twenty-five thousand dollar mortgage plus the fifty-eight hundred dollar, um, lien, the, or default judgment on, uh, to Calvary, Cavalry SPV. So, you know, we may not, we would be third in line behind those two in a foreclosure.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just don't know that our prospects of getting paid are very high on that, because I don't think the property would be worth more than the roughly thirty thousand owed on it. I mean, even the, even if the mortgage had been paid down some on it, there's still probably twenty-five thousand or so owed on it, and with a house in that kind of condition, I don't know that there's enough value in the house to, to really pay off both of those ahead of us and then our cleanup lien. So, if we got it torn down and then put that as a, as a, um, as an as- assessment on the taxes, we may actually have better luck getting that paid there. Um, the other property, the Tipton property, since there's no mortgage, that one, we might wanna foreclose on. This one, though, we might wanna wait and see what happens with taxes on it, because we'd be third in line otherwise.
But is there anything we can make him do, I mean, he don't, he don't, I don't even think he have water over there.
Well, he's not gonna do nothing, it's been seven years.
I know, and I understand that the floors are, you can see their floors.
Right.
You know, he need let somebody, in, let inspector go in there and look to see what he's got.
Rhonda done a letter today.
Is she?
She's gonna send him to, basically, tell, we've got to be able to go in and look.
Yeah.
We've had some luck in England with an ordinance that we have on our books there in England that basically says you gotta keep your property clean. I think Lonoak has a simi- similar ordinance.
Yeah.
And it's something that actually the, the police could, could enforce by, by basically issuing a citation, um.
Hey, I was at court twenty-five hundred now, for that same thing.
Right.
Dating back years.
Gotcha, well Judge, Judge Smith, at least in England, I think does a good job of balancing the fact that obviously these people are strapped financially with wanting to get it cleaned up, so she, she tends to give them time, you know, as long as they're making progress on it. She withholds, um, withholds assessing new fines against them, because if they're still not gonna be able to pay fines, we'd, we'd rather them pay what they were gonna pay towards fines, towards cleaning up the property, so she, she's, we've had some luck, I mean, some properties, people just aren't gonna take care of them like they should, but we've had some luck in England with, with having a citation issued, having them have to come to court, having to explain to Judge Smith what they've done, if anything, on the property, and then her just kinda resetting it to make sure that they're making progress on it, um.
We said, we seven to nine years dealing with Paul Lambis, and he's passed up seven or, seven to nine spring cleanups to clean his property up. And he has not made one effort. And then after we condemned his property, he did, the next spring cleanup, he did nothing to help himself.
Brought more, he, he brought more in this last year than he had, than he had last year.
It's worse than it was last.
Cleaned it up, but he, he never has.
Well, the, the flip side of what I said about Judge Smith is she will also hold their feet to the fire. If they don't make progress on it, then, then we go forward with the case, we have our code enforcement officer to, to show photos of what the property looks like, and then they can get fined. And it's a thing, I mean, and I get it, that if he's already got five thousand and something in fines, this may not be as, um,
No, it's not.
As strong, but I mean, there are penalties for failing to pay fines too, you know, if he's not making payments on it throughout, throughout the time. I mean, these are hard cases, because the whole, whole, they all come down to somebody just doesn't have enough money or desire to, to take care of it, but if we can put pressure both ways by asserting the lien on the property and, um, asserting pressure through the courts, you know, maybe, maybe we can get some movement on it. I may, I may be overly optimistic according to Jim Ed at this point.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's a losing battle, and us, we just take action.
Right.
We're gonna have to do something to.
It's not gonna do.
Because it's not fair to the property owners all around the neighborhood, the whole neighborhood. Not just across the street, it's everybody. He's not gonna do nothing to court, he can't get, he ain't paying his fines, we don't have a jail yet, lock him up, I, you know, what do you do? Meanwhile, everybody lives around him over there, it's pitiful. So. People keep calling me and asking me whether we're gonna do anything, yep. And I, I feel, I, I hate for it to be next to me, just like anybody in this room, so. At one time, we were waiting on bids to tear it down.
I think we need to go through that process again, you know, is that?
We didn't get any bids, and we did that, we did it a couple of times, we didn't get bids on either one of them, so we need, we had to get updated title work, it's been so long, so.
I was just go, going both routes, even though y'all don't have a lot of faith in the criminal part being all that, um, important to him, at least it's, at least it's something, if we're going both routes, going the condemnation route and, uh, the criminal charge route, um. Maybe I'll.
Yeah, but you can still, you can give them all the tickets you wanna get, but you're not gonna get nothing out of it.
Didn't bond to say he, he hasn't worked, he lost his vehicle, and he's kinda staying in a little corner of the house. No water, no lights or anything.
There's two vehicles in the yard.
Yeah, somebody gave him a truck.
We know, he don't have no license, he had to pay his property tax, so he can't get tags.
His property tax been paid, ain't it?
Yeah, they was paid, just here a while back. He went to auction.
They, yeah, they weren't paid for, it was certified to the state in twenty twenty-one, and then he redeemed it this year, which means he had to pay whatever is said in here to, to catch it up and get it back.
Whatever you wanna do.
Y'all voted to move forward with that one, so.
Right, but, uh, also the code enforcement, you know, police could, could go the other route too.
Or it's condemnation, is that what we're doing? Tearing it down? That's what I vote for. Did we?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're going forward. And then the three twenty-three England Street. That's the other one we did last time, we just never did get a bid to tear it down.
I'll make a motion, we move forward with that one?
Okay, we move forward with three twenty-three England. From Wendell, seconded by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion care.
Status on that, there's no mortgages on that property, but there are delinquent taxes, so we'd be behind delinquent taxes, but that's just a couple hundred bucks.
Right. Let's see where they started cleaning up the Adams property, somebody bought it at auction, and they're gonna try to fix it up if possible, if not, she said they was gonna tear it down. They started cutting all the trees from around it the other day.
Now, we, uh, need a motion to put Resolution ten one two zero two four on the, to move some of the ARPA money from, uh, animal control to parks.
I'll make a motion. To put Resolution ten one two, twenty twenty-four.
Jim Ed, seconded by Stephen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.
Is the resolution that was in the packet the same as the resolution that was on our?
Yes, the only thing that's different is the tax, the dollar amount and everything's still the same.
Okay, thank you. Resolution number ten dash one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City Council to obligate American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of park crew equipment and amend the twenty twenty-four American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund Budget. Whereas the City of Lonoak recognizes the need to provide services to it for its local citizens, and the mayor and the City Council understand the responsibility of the Lonoak Public Works Department to deliver services that promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Lonoak. And whereas the City of Lonoak has received funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which was signed into law on March first, twenty twenty-one, to provide fiscal relief funds to state and local governments and other program areas aimed at mitigating the continuing effects of the pandemic. And whereas this resolution is intended as a statement of intent of the City Council to spend a portion of the city's ARPA funds in accordance with federal law and guidance for the current needs and priorities as set forth below. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Lonoak, Arkansas, that Section One, the City Council hereby obligates ten thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents from the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the purchase of parks equipment as shown on Exhibit A. Section two, the American Rescue, Rescue Plan Act Budget Previously Approved is now amended to reflect the following as shown. Increase Parks Trail Project, ten thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, decrease Animal Control Project, ten thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Section three, it's necessary for the continued operation of municipal government that the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund Budget approved by Resolution one dash one dash twenty twenty-four be amended to reflect the changes represented in Exhibit B as attached.
There is a correction, you should say, you're on the Parks Department, not Lonoak Public Works Department.
Okay. Make a motion, accept.
Motion accept, but Jim Ed, seconded by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion care. Approval to pay bills, motion, motion Jim Ed to pay bills, seconded by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care. Announcements, uh, Planning and Zoning Committee will be held next Monday. Uh, my birthday birthday at six P M. Think of anything else?
I've, I've got a question right quick.
What's that?
Do we, do we have a budget committee anymore?
We haven't, uh, last year, we just, the department heads met with me and with you, when we went through all of it. What we done last year?
Yeah.
Cause I didn't have anybody.
I, I, I think there needs to be a budget committee to kinda sit in.
I've talked to a few people, but they didn't have time, wasn't interested, but. Yeah, if y'all see anybody who wants to do that, tell them to holler at me.
Motion adjourned, Jim Ed.
There you go.
Seconded by Sean, all in favor, say aye. Seconded by Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.